Items amending policy number HO1.00, F21.00, and 2200. This came to the exec committee and the executive committee reviewed the motion and on May 5th, and moved the item forward to the board for consideration pending the edits discussed.
Yes, I move the school board amend policies number F21.00, H01.00, and 2200 as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Any questions, Dr. Carey?
It's my understanding that at the last board meeting, there was some pretty lively discussion over this particular item, and I wasn't here, so I didn't have an opportunity to make any comments. As Director Harris mentioned, there are some concerns about this policy and whether or not it will ultimately take care of some of the difficulties that the public has when things happen. And as we're seeing, this isn't necessarily going to prevent programs dying through attrition because we just can't continue to fund them, and so they wither on the vine. And what I'd like for us to do, while I support this because I think the oversight is good, and I've talked about this with a few other people, what I really would like to see us as a board do is get a global picture of how we are placing programs throughout our district and how we are assigning our students to them. And I think that that would bring this conversation to the level of oversight and direction where we could direct our district in terms of what programs we want to be offering throughout our district, to which populations, and how are we ensuring that all the different populations are having equitable access to the really interesting programs that we're making available in some communities. And so I think this is a good start, but I hope this isn't where the conversation ends, and I hope that we will all continue to look for ways to better understand our student assignment plan, oversee that's development, protect its formation once we have decided how we want programs to be offered in our district, and then make sure that our student assignment plan is designed to guide students into those programs to keep them viable and healthy. But that was my only comment because I just want to make sure that there are concerns that remain I am hearing, and I think that if we do that other piece, we will get to them in a more satisfying way.
Dr. Harris?
Thank you. I agree with my esteemed colleague, Director Gary. This is a first step. There are other issues that need to be addressed here like program evaluation. I agree with Principal Clark that we need to be using the race and equity tool as we address these issues. I am pleased that members of the community have reached out and suggested that this creates another layer of bureaucracy. To that, I say, only if we let it. If we do a better job of community engagement, which I believe we will be doing, and again, huge props to Director, excuse me, to Superintendent Nyland for placing Carrie Campbell in her new position, I have great faith and hope that our engagement will prove exponentially. I don't see the concern from some community-based organizations that we will create, quote, "another layer of bureaucracy" that might be insensitive as a reason to vote against that because that's only if we allow that to happen. And I think the onus is on us to do a much better job of community engagement. I think the onus is also on us to take the next step thoughtfully about how we place our sped services or programs or whatever the heck we are calling, whatever the heck we are doing. Cleaning up the language about what it is exactly that we are talking about is a beautiful The collaboration that has happened between this board and the staff in bringing this forward has also been a beautiful thing, and I appreciate it immensely. Last, Associate Superintendent Tolly told me that we didn't have to bring a formal resolution to get rid of footnote number four in the 2009 student assignment plan that changed middle college, high school from an alternative offering to a service-based school. And I look forward to getting that change back to an alternative school as well as changing interagency to an alternative school as well as a service school. Those are, those are good things to be celebrated, but again, it's only a first step. Thank you.
Director Burke?
I would, I would like to follow up Director Harris's comments with actually a question for staff. We had a couple of concerns raised by community that these edits, these adjustments to policy could have an adverse effect on community-based organizations and require an extra layer of bureaucracy or delay in the work that they do. And so I was wondering if, if staff could advise if this has any effect, and if so, how?
Michael Tolly, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I have not actually been part of that conversation, so I don't have any information, and at this moment, I can't think of any concerns, but I'm sure if it was brought forward by a member of the community, they have thought through it and have identified a concern that we need to be aware of and address, but at this moment, I can't think of any.
Thank you. I guess my, my request is, as we go through this work, that we look at each of these cases, you know, we're, we're, we're changing something in the underlying fabric of the district, and so every, every opportunity to exercise this revised policy is a test case, and that we go into it with eyes open, and if it looks like our unintended consequences outweigh our positive transparency, that we take a hard look at this again.
Any more comments? Director Peters?
Well, I appreciate the comments from my colleagues, and I really want to, once again, thank everybody for their input. We did start discussing this, I think, back in February, and since then, everybody has weighed in. I also want to acknowledge the collaboration that went on with staff and myself over this effort, specifically with Erin Bennett, Stephen Nielsen, and General Counsel Noel Treat. So, and I appreciate what my colleagues have said about this being a first step. You know, we'll, we'll see how this, where this takes us, but I think it's the step that's motivated by some really important factors, and that is a desire to bring some really important elements to the process, a very important process concerning how we treat our schools, our sites, our programs, our services, whatever you call it, these are all the places where, that our children call their schools. And so whenever we do something differently to them or start a new one, it affects a lot of people in a way that goes beyond just brick and mortar. So what I believe we're addressing here is our responsibility for transparency, accountability, and our responsibility to the community. And so I, I look forward to supporting these changes and bringing not extra bureaucracy, but the appropriate oversight to these decisions. Thank you.
Director R. Blanford?
I, we discussed this item pretty thoroughly in the last meeting, so I'll try to be brief. I, at that meeting, shared strong opposition to this item, and I, my position hasn't changed on that. I did a little bit more research and found more reasons why I believe this is a bad idea. To start off with, I would share, again, the, the point that I made before, that I think there is an unfortunate confluence of, of subjects, the, the way that this item and middle college, the closure of or not closure of middle college, I think it's unfortunate that those two items have come together. I choose to look at this item separate from that item. I think there are some serious issues that we need to resolve, that we need to have more investigation and discovery about what has transpired at middle college, but I believe that this is a separate item because I believe that it has consequences or implications that go far beyond middle college. Secondly, a second point that I would make is that in the two weeks that we have transpired since, I made my first statement, I had the opportunity, again, to have conversation with more people that I know in Washington State who, when I asked the question this time about, is there any other district that has similar language and that we could look at and find out if they have had a positive or negative experience as a result of their language? I discovered that there are none, and that causes me great concern because I believe, again, that we in Seattle are not looking to our other districts, if there are 295 or 96 districts in Washington State, and none of them have a language that empowers the board to, to micromanage in this manner. There is something that we should learn from that. And then third, when I think about the scenarios, there's been a lot of discussion so far about this being a first step and we evaluating what has transpired as a result of taking this step. I think of this scenario, I think of a scenario where the superintendent or senior staff makes a recommendation to us that our program is closed because of non-performance, underperformance, suboptimal performance in one way or another, and immediately, there's a community of parents, which you could find in any school, in the highest performing or the lowest performing school, there will be a group of parents and students who will strongly advocate for the sustainability of the program despite the fact that the superintendent and senior staff have judged that it's not, not, should not be kept open. And we on this board don't think enough about the opportunity costs of overruling our superintendent in that case. I believe the opportunity costs are severe, beyond the fact that it demoralizes the staff to work really hard and to come up with a decision that they believe is in the best interest of the district, and then to have that overruled. I believe that it also has the effect of, of, of making it more difficult for us to move forward. And then finally, I believe really strongly that there are opportunity costs associated with making those decisions. If we are making in, around this table, if we are making decisions with limited amounts of money, and we hear frequently that one program is closing, another program doesn't have sufficient funds to do its bidding, and then we decide to keep a program open that is performing, is not performing adequately and supporting our students, then we really are not living up to the values and the expectations that our community sent us here with. I, I believe very strongly that we are, as a former board member used to say, we have to make really tough choices all of the time, and sometimes those choices are not palatable, are not fun, but are necessary in order to deal with the limited number of dollars that we have available. And so for all of those reasons, I feel very strongly that this is a bad idea, that it pushes the board into the realm of micromanagement, which heretofore, we've tried to stay clear of, and because of those reasons, I'm planning to vote no.
Director Gary?
I could also foresee an instance where our senior staff and our superintendent come, and we do get an outcry from the public, and we sit here in this room, and we hear everybody's point, and it is aired, and then each of us will sit up here and we will have to give the reasoning behind why it is that we're going to make the decision. And I don't assume that we won't stand with our staff and our superintendent, but I do think that in terms of moving forward as a district, it's a lot healthier for us to have a forum where people can come and be heard and know they were heard and look at their elected representatives for an explanation, and that we are held accountable for an explanation to them, and that we hold our staff accountable, not in a negative way, but also provide our staff an opportunity to stand before the public and give a hearing of sorts to the issue so that we all are on the same page, we all had an opportunity to listen to the reasoning, and we made a decision. And that goes back to my hope that we have a better understanding of our student assignment plan so that when we make those decisions, we can make it in the context of a holistic program for our district that demonstrates that we are, as a board, understand what is happening throughout our city. So I respect very much your, your desire to stand with and support our staff, and I don't assume that this won't ultimately give us a better opportunity to go forward as a district without the rifts that we have been seeing historically.
Director Harris?
Thank you. I appreciate your viewpoint. I do, however, really, really, really strongly agree with Director Gary that it is important for those of us that are elected to stand up and get counted and give you our reasons for our difficult decisions. I really, really, really resent the comment and the quote about micromanagement. I don't believe by passing this resolution, when we have worked together hand in hand with staff, that that is in fact, micromanagement. And I hope very much that this is not the beginning of certain folks at the Seattle Times and otherwise identifying this as a, quote, dysfunctional board and accusing us as micromanaging, which has really caused a great deal of harm in the last 10 years for how this district is perceived.
Director Burke?
It, it may be a little bit of an oversimplification because a lot of the issues that face us are complicated. And I think what, what Director Blanford was referring to, the, I recall Sherri Carr talking about how we make choices, not decisions. And what I feel this policy work allows is that when we make choices, we should be able to justify them. If we can't justify them, we shouldn't be making them, and we're holding the staff to the same level of, of justification that we're asking them to help us justify choices, and there's a, there's a level of collaboration and respect there that I'm really proud to work with this team of experts and ask them, hey, help justify this particular choice. And I think that level of synergy and, and dialogue is a really positive thing.
Dr. Peters?
Well, I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues, and I, you know, I especially like the way that Director Gary framed this as a, a positive step to have a forum. And I do want to point out that when we first discussed this, or when we discussed this at a work session, I, I put forth a PowerPoint, and I gave some examples of in the last few years where a school or a site or a program was changed or moved or opened, and it wasn't just middle college. I mean, the list I, I used for that example was middle college, interagency, opened on Queen Anne, Indian Heritage Program at Wilson Pacific, the Experimental Education Unit at UW, the highly capable cohort, spectrum, and special education. So, and not all of these were closures. For example, the open, opening interagency at Queen Anne was one where ultimately, I think the, the challenge with that was that the community was not engaged early on, and it came to us with a lot of confusion. And so ultimately, I mean, I, I support the decision that was made by staff in opening interagency in Queen Anne, but the board was not a part of that discussion, and then when the public came to the board and asked about it, we had no way of weighing in on it at all. So I don't think we should assume that this is going to lead to any kind of confrontations. You know, it will lead to discussion. I also believe that board directors are on the ground in our schools and our communities in a way that we are supposed to be as representatives of the public, and we can bring perspectives to the conversation that should be able to help staff and the superintendent make wise decisions. And so this is meant to be a step in a collaborative direction as well as being one that's responsive to the community and to transparency. The other problem is when decisions are made without the public really understanding the rationale, too often, people assume that something was done for the wrong reason. This gives us an opportunity to understand the reasons. This gives us an opportunity for staff to, and superintendent to explain the rationale. I also, you know, to the point of micromanaging, I mean, I, I agree with, with Director Harris's points. As I've said before, one person's micromanaging is another person's due diligence. I also want to say in regards to other school districts in the state, you know, as a largest school district in the state, I think it's okay for us to be a trailblazer on at least some issues, so I'm not as concerned about, about that. And I think that's, that's all I wanted to say for now.
Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you to Director Peters and all the staff that actually worked on this, and also to Superintendent Nyland for putting this together so it would be where we can all agreed on the purpose why we're actually bringing this amendment forward. And also wanted to, you know, this, this policy actually, it's a, very dear to me because of all the things that I felt that needed to happen in terms of, of programs that were actually closed and not being notified about why they were closed. And it's not the fact that we want to micromanage what's going on with the programs, it's the fact that we want to be assured that when any program is closed or any school is closed, that we at least as board have the opportunity to be notified and see whether, you know, where is this all going or what, why is it happening? What can we do to actually to help work together with the staff to be able to come up with a better solution, a win-win situation, other than just closing a program down and not letting the community know about it, and the board don't know anything about it? So this policy to me is, it's just a way of us being able to just work together with staff and superintendent to be able to come together and figure out what can we do better about certain programs or, so we can be able to provide opportunities and, and always looking forward to, how is this going to benefit our kids? That's the whole reason why we're here is because the kids that we serve are all our students, and if we're not here making choices that are going to benefit our students, then, you know, our effort is wasteful. I believe that any decision that we make here as board directors, it should always be, how is it going to benefit all the kids of Seattle Public Schools? As I watch many programs close, many of these programs serve to the needs of kids of color. We're talking about closing the achievement gap. We can never close the achievement gap. If we close programs, it's going to target those kids and their learning styles. Many of those kids cannot maneuver into a regular school, so that's the reason why we have alternative programs so our students can have the opportunity to learn the way that they see that fit, that their learning style that can actually help them to be successful in schools. If we can't give them those opportunities, then we're actually doing them a disfavor, and we're also, this continued program is going to help our kids of color progress and be able to be successful. As you heard, many kids, many students came and testified of how successful middle college helped them to be able to graduate and made them think beyond than what they thought they could be able to do. When we hear stories like that, that's what we're supposed to do as board directors. Listen to the stories of these students, that what has, you know, what has these programs done for them? And to me is that that's the most important. If these programs are making our kids successful, then it's our, you know, it's our responsibility to support and make sure these programs continue on so all our kids can be successful and not close them down for kids that actually have a learning style that they cannot be able to be served in any schools. When these programs were created, they were created for kids that cannot go to regular programs. So I believe that this policy will help not only the, the board, but also the staff and the superintendent to work together so we can make the best choices that we can on behalf of our students of Seattle Public Schools. We're ready to vote.
Director Blanford?
No.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Gary?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
Director Peters?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
This motion has passed, 5 to 1.
Our second action item is repeal of board policy A01.00 and approve board policy 0010.
I move that the school board repeal board policy A01.00 and adopt policy number 0010 as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
CNI Chair, what's your recommendation?
This was considered multiple places, committee of the whole on March 14th. CNI policy committee meetings, October 12th of last year, January 11th, February 8th, April 4th, and May 9th of this year, and was moved forward for consideration by the full board.
Any questions? Comments? Ms. Ritchie, vote?
I, I do need to mention that there was a, an edit made to the attachment between introduction and action. The edit was in the footnote section of the policy where cross-reference and the previous policy documentation was adjusted to reflect what it should have been there prior.
Thank you. Ms. Ritchie, the vote?
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Gary?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
Director Peters?
Yes.
Director Blanford?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number three, amending board procedure 1430 BP, audience participation.
I move that the school board amend board procedure 1430 BP as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Okay, this came to the executive committee, and committee reviewed the motion and moved the item forward to the full board for consideration pending the discuss edits. Any questions, comments on this item? Director Peters?
Okay, overall, I support the direction of this policy. I do have a couple of concerns. I do have a couple concerns. One of them has to do with the plan to let students take priority in the list of speakers. And I think on the one hand, it does support our interest in letting the voice of our students be heard. I would like to see how it works out and is there anything in the language that would prevent students from ceding their time to non-students?
Thank you, Director Peters. Teresa Hale, School Board Office Manager. There's not specific language in the policy that says a student could not do that. So it's not beyond the realm of reason. But just to clarify, I know there'd been previous comments on it that when I introduce the item and language that we have in the procedure, students who sign up have to identify themselves as students and they have to actually make it into the speakers list. So they have to actually be one of the 20 people through the normal process. They would never, we would never bump someone from the speakers list because we have a student on the waitlist. That will never happen. But in your case, it's a little different of a scenario, so I couldn't speak to how that would be handled.
Right. So in other words, they will be added to the waitlist in the order in which they contact the district, just like?
Yeah, when we receive public testimony requests, we first assemble them in pure chronological order and then we identify those people who are speaking to action items as they are the first group. Then we would identify people for introduction items and then anyone after that would be just general topics in chronological order. After we've created those groups, we would then look for those students who have identified as students and we would move them into the spots immediately following the first assigned student speaker spot that we have already at every board meeting.
Okay, so the position of when the students speak is really what's at issue here, not who qualifies for the top 20?
Right. It's just giving them the ability to speak a little bit earlier in the meeting. And I believe when the Executive Committee discussed it, it was to give students that chance to make sure that they didn't have to wait too long into the length of the meeting and such.
Okay, and then allow them to go home and finish their homework?
Yes.
I think that's where the conversation went on that. Okay, thank you for that clarification. That was really helpful. And then the other concern I want to bring up was something that was brought up in public testimony and that is the word ridicule. There's some, some words given as to what is not permitted in public comment and the question was what does ridicule mean? And that's an interesting question because it, there's a fine history of satire where, you know, where some form of ridicule can make a point and isn't necessarily a personal attack or an identifiable personal attack. Why are we prohibiting ridicule from this?
Well, I would just note that we've had a standing board testimony rules that have been located in a separate document on the website and we felt that there were a few points in those rules that we should bring over into this procedure. So that's where that particular line came from, where it says, "Speakers may not use racial slurs, personal insults, ridicule or threats during their testimony." And that's just kind of been a standing, you know, those are seen as negative things within the scope of that list. If you pull out ridicule as a separate thing, we could discuss the nuances of what it could mean. But it's, and it's also kind of subjective in the moment. You know, this is the board's president's discretion to ask a testimony speaker to refrain from making certain remarks or to even ask them to stop speaking if their testimony goes, you know, out of bounds, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Director Blanford?
So to that last point, I just find myself wondering if me as the non-president of the board found something to be ridiculing, I'm using probably the wrong tense of that word, but if I found something inappropriate, given the, given the policy that we have in place, do I have to defer to the board president or could I call a point of order and, and ask at that point?
I would, in the procedure just following where that line is included, it does include, it does list what the board president may do. And so that really does sit with the president or rather the person who's chairing the meeting. So in the absence of the president, whoever's chairing the meeting is basically running the testimony process. And so the board president may call a speaker out of order, request that they leave, and there's a variety of steps as things progress.
Good evening. Noel Tree, General Counsel. I love it when I get to come up and talk about Robert's Rules. Yeah, there is, I think under Robert's Rules, the process would be for you to try and call a point of order. The Board Policy does grant this rule primarily to the president, but other members of the body, when they feel that a procedure rule or other rule like this is violated, could call a point of order. Obviously, it'd be kind of a difficult thing to do with someone speaking here in only three minutes and things, but that would be the procedure if, if you felt like a speaker was running afoul of the policy and the president had not yet intervened.
And at, at that point, the president would rule on the point of order?
The president would rule on the point of order and then, under Robert's Rules, if a majority of the board disagreed with the president's ruling, that could be then overturned.
And, and I know this is a hypothetical situation because we know that our, our folks that are testifying are very appropriate and we on the board are very appropriate as well. So I'm just wondering in a hypothetical situation, what we would do. So thank you for that.
Any more comments, questions? Can Ms. Ritchie, the vote?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham? I mean, Director Patu?
Aye.
This vote has passed unanimously.
Okay, our next action item, Seattle Preschool Program, Dearborn Park.
I move that the board authorize the superintendent to add Dearborn Park International School as a Seattle Preschool Program, funded preschool program, and authorize the receipt of Seattle Preschool Program grant funds from the City of Seattle Department of Education and Early Learning in the amount of $220,518 and to revise the previously approved amendment to the service agreement to reflect the addition of the Dearborn Park Elementary preschool classroom with any minor additions, deletions and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary steps to implement this action.
I second the motion.
This motion was discussed at the Executive Committee on May 5th, 2016. The Committee reviewed the motion and moved this item forward for consideration by the full board. Any questions, comments? Can Ms. Ritchie?
So we're being asked to enter into an agreement with the city to have a Seattle Preschool Program classroom established at Dearborn Park International School. And this is in addition to the ones we voted on earlier in the year. So earlier in the year, we approved adding preschool classrooms in conjunction with the city, Thornton Creek, Arbor Heights, Boron, K-5, and there's one other one, isn't there? What was it? Highland Park? That's right, Highland Park, thank you. And then that's in addition to the three that we already have. So that brings it, if we approve this tonight, that will bring it up to eight preschool classrooms that would be, I guess, run by Seattle School District, but part, no, run in conjunction with the city as part of the Seattle Preschool Program. All right. So I understand that this proposal would replace two preschool classrooms with one and there would be a before and after school care program. There currently is a before and after school care program, so that wouldn't, there would not be a net change there at all. There would be a net loss, though, of a preschool classroom, though I understand the current provider is leaving. So I'm torn about this one for the following reasons. We are, we haven't completed a year yet with our partnership with the city in the Seattle Preschool Program. We have the three classrooms right now at Van Assault, original Van Assault, and why am I blanking? There was somewhere, oh, Bailey Ganser. The original one, okay. So we have those three and they haven't yet run a full year yet, so we don't yet know exactly how well that's working. We have some indicators. We don't yet know whether we're meeting all the performance goals. I think we are so far, but there's still that issue of whether or not the full amount will be provided to the district. There's a 25% amount of funds that the city withholds until the district meets its performance goals or proves that it does. So we don't know yet if we've, we've done that. And so we've already agreed to add four more classrooms and now we're being asked to add one more. And my concern is about the district overextending itself into preschool when it is not our main mandate. Our main mandate is K-12. We don't yet know how many resources we're using and whether the amount of money that the city is providing is covering everything we're doing. So I, I feel like there's still a lot of questions and that haven't been answered and yet we're being asked to expand this program even more. And so that, that concerns me. I'm also troubled by the, the history of the preschool classrooms at Dearborn Park insofar as there used to be a, I think it was a developmental special ed preschool in that site that was moved to old Van Assault and then, now we're moving in the city's program. I know there's a couple steps in between, but it seems like we are giving a lot of space to the city's program, which means we're taking on new responsibilities. So I understand that the community does want to have preschool there. I also understand that if we don't approve this tonight, then another provider is, is welcome to come in and provide preschool in that space. So it doesn't mean there would be no preschool there necessarily. So at this point, the amount of money that is involved is over a million dollars. I think it was 1.4 million dollars for the first four and this is another 250,000, is that right? So we're not talking about a significant amount of money, almost $2 million, 25% of which we may or may not be reimbursed for. And so I think we're entering into an area of experimentation where I would like to be a little bit more cautious. And so I'm having a little bit of trouble supporting this expansion until we have results from our initial investment in this program. Thank you.
Director Blanford?
Ms. Toner, I have some questions. I'm, I'm wondering if you can speak to our performance thus far. I remember you shared earlier that we are in line to receive the 25%. Has anything changed with regard to that?
Sure. So I could be happy to speak to that. We have three milestones yet to meet. They were due on May 31st, so we're in the process of submitting that we've completed those last three milestones and then we'll have met our target of meeting all nine milestones this year.
In my understanding of those three milestones or the milestones that were incomplete when we spoke on this subject before, were that they are just perform, they are, I'm forgetting what the word is, but something that is not outcomes based?
Right.
It's just, we are just, we have to cross the Ts and dot the Is?
Yeah, programmatic milestones.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And also, I'm wondering if you can share any statistics that you have on hand about the amount of demand that we have in the City of Seattle for preschool and not, I know the number is very high for preschool, but for quality preschool, I believe, is probably equally high.
Yep. So I think the, anecdotally, you could talk with families about, you know, years and years of waitlists for kids to be in line, to be accepted, to programming for preschool. You probably all have stories from your families and friends about signing up for waitlists. That compounds when you have families that are in transition or have some other barrier to receiving high-quality service. So we've heard from our communities that there is a high demand. Where you get into the statistics around that is it gets a little bit, you know, there are different buckets of preschool service. So full day, different grant funding streams and things like that. But generally speaking, there's high demand for preschool.
And so my questions may seem a little bit leading, and they are, in that, in that I know that there is tremendous demand for high-quality preschool and I know equally well that the ultimate beneficiaries of high-quality preschool are Seattle Public Schools and the City of Seattle in that it becomes a lot easier for us to do the work that we're tasked with doing when students arrive at the kindergarten door ready to learn. And that's, my understanding is that's what happens in the preschool slots. The other question that I have for you, and this is the last one, I think, has to do with, with the fact that the city is asking us to apply for the slots. Is, is that a correct understanding? Meaning the city is encouraging us to, to allow for these slots to occur at Dearborn Park?
Correct. The city is, you know, a partner in this work and has encouraged us to be thinking about where does, where's the right fit? So when we have an opportunity where a provider has decided for whatever reason to voluntarily leave, then we could potentially replace that service with the funding stream from Seattle Preschool Program and have Seattle teachers be able to teach those preschool classrooms. So that's, that's the nuance, is that there'll be SEA, you know, teachers, certificated lead teacher, instructional assistant, as we've done at our other sites over, over time.
So for, in my mind, for all of those reasons, for the, the amount of demand that's out there, for the fact that we stand to benefit and the students of Seattle Public Schools stand to benefit and the City of Seattle stands to benefit, for all of those reasons, it seems to me that this would be something that we would eagerly endorse and I'm planning to endorse it.
I'm also planning on endorsing this. I think just as Director Peters pointed out, that there are other preschools waiting to potentially fill the spot should it not work out, we also are doing this on an annually reviewable basis. And so should we need to have the program replaced with a different provider, I foresee that possibility if there are problems. What I wanted to explore here goes a little bit beyond this, but I think it's something that I, I want us to think about in terms of shaping these programs. And it's my understanding now that the city is partnering with the EEU for two preschools within the EEU program and that part of that agreement has been to maintain the ratios that the EEU has historically maintained in terms of an inclusion preschool. And I know that's been a goal that we've been talking about as a district, but I'm not hearing that we're putting those types of contractual requirements into the preschools that we're developing. And given that this is now a possibility that we know the city is willing to engage in, I just throw that out as we move forward. If that is truly something that we want to expand, the offering of that type of inclusive community throughout our district, I'll be looking for any further expansion to include those kinds of requirements and even potentially with the ones that we've already set up as we renew our contracts, looking to put those kinds of requirements in now that we know that the city is willing to do that, based upon what we've learned or can learn from their contract with the EEU.
Director Burke?
I, I have three points of question that I'd like to bring up. First one starts with a basis that putting, should we have available space in our buildings, putting in a preschool program is overwhelmingly a good idea? And is it, what is, how is it determined whether we look at an SPP program or whether we put it out to an RFQ through a community-based organization? Is that something that is a building decision or how is that determined?
So staff brought that opportunity to the subcommittee and had the conversation and took direction from the board about what, what you'd like for us to explore. But it's been a little bit of staff thinking, a little bit of board direction and a little bit of community BLT or school-based request thus far. bit of community BLT or school-based request thus far.
Okay. I think that would be an interesting discussion to have as more sites come up, to understand what are the factors that, you know, as Director Blanford mentioned, a high-quality program like Seattle Preschool, or if we're looking at a reduced hour, something that has potentially less coverage time, if that actually is indicated as something that it's more favored. What are the drivers for that at the local level? My next question, so that we also don't rehash the same discussion too many times, a year from now, will we be able to ask, are we paying our costs? Do we have the financial tracking mechanisms in place where we can say, we've spent this much, we've been reimbursed that much? Is this something where we have the indicators in place?
So one part of that work will be addressed with our preschool task force, because that was one of the charges from our board, was to think about, look at all the financial implications. So we're in the process of doing that work right now. And then internally, we have mechanisms where we've been reviewing and having a series of meetings to track the actual expenses against the projected budget that we developed. So we're in the process internally, and then we also have the task force addressing that exact issue.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd love to, at a future conversation when this comes up, to be able to show historical budget trends that indicate that this is a cost-neutral program. And then we've addressed demand, we've addressed finance, so what about customer satisfaction? Of the programmatic milestones, do any of those include a community survey or a, do we have feedback from our users of this service that they're satisfied with it that we can use as an indicator moving forward?
Anecdotally, yes, but hard data around surveying folks for their satisfaction, no. But thanks for the suggestion. We could always get better at our work, and asking for that sort of feedback is, it's a smart move.
Right, it's just that as, the more of these we put in, the harder it will be to implement something like that. So if that's a thing that we can make, you know, essentially exit slips for parents at the end of the year, it can start informal, but some level of even quantitative or even qualitative feedback would be a good thing.
Dr. Harris?
It's no surprise I'm a little cynical about this program, but I do believe that the resolution we put forth regarding the task force, and having stepped in and seen the quality of our task force members, I am absolutely pleased to be able to vote for this. They have a very difficult mission with very difficult questions to answer. I would hate to lose an opportunity because someone will fill that spot. So this is an opportunity, and we'll continue asking the difficult questions and looking at, in fact, data, not anecdotes, a year from now. Thank you.
Dr. Blanford?
I thought of one more question to ask. When you use the term, when you were talking about the staff and the board working together, I remember from one of those meetings that I participated in, there was a really strong guidance from the board to ensure that the programs that were being set up were not, that at no point in the near future would they be clawed back to support our classroom needs. And so I want to just verify that that is indeed the case in this particular situation.
So thank you for reminding us about that. And this proposal is for one classroom, because the current spaces, there are two classrooms there, but the before and after care has to take place in another space because of that. So we brought forward the idea of just one classroom so that the before and after care could also be located in a more, in that space as well. So also, we've worked with facilities to talk about, you know, what is the capacity of the building, and talked to us about the five-year projection. And Dr. Herndon, would you like, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so the five-year projection, you know, it's just that, it's a projection moving out. Obviously, we will review the space annually, but right now it looks like there's space there, and if there didn't, then the year before that, we would certainly bring that to the attention of the school and the school board.
Any more comments? Dr. Peters?
Just have one question about enrollment, because I know that, like Director Blanford, you know, it's my understanding that there's a big demand for preschool, especially, you know, high-quality preschool. And so that's why I was surprised to find out at the beginning of the year or after a few months into the year, that the three classrooms that we established with the city were not full. I think one was at 17, one was at 15. Eventually, I think they filled. And I've heard that other classrooms that the city is running in its preschool program that doesn't involve the district also have not been full. And the city is the one responsible for enrollment. And so that would concern me if we're going through all this trouble and all this expense, and we're only serving a minimum number of students, especially in a case where we have taken sites that served more students and we've cut it down, like in the case of Highland Park, we're going from 40 to 20. So is the city still in charge of enrollment? And do we know whether these classrooms, can we, do we have any assurances about them being filled and, you know, maximized?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. We, a big thing we've changed this year from last year is the timing. So we're having this conversation, it's June 1st, and last year we didn't move forward with decision-making until about August 19th, and so we were starting way behind usually. At the same time, there was also, you know, it's a pretty steep learning curve for the city to enroll. That was new work for them, and so we partnered with them to help them, you know, work that out a little bit more. So now that their processes are a little bit streamlined, and also we have a different opportunity because of where we are in the school year, we're setting ourselves up for better success. Also, I agree with you. Classrooms that don't have, you know, that aren't fully enrolled, we're missing an opportunity for kids and families. So we're working really hard right now to enroll the classrooms that you already approved. So we're in the process of that, and as soon as we have a decision about this, then we'll begin that work probably tomorrow.
Any more comments? Okay, Ms. Ritchie, vote?
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Gary?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
Director Peters?
No.
Director Blanford?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
This motion has passed 5 to 1.
Okay, our next action item is motion to accept proposal to reduce slots from 430 to 400 as part of the plan to manage 2017 Head Start budget.
I motion that the, oh, sorry, I have the wrong, I have the committee meeting. I move that the school board approve the proposal to reduce Head Start slots from 430 to 400, authorize the board president to execute the required assurances, and authorize the superintendent to take any additional steps as are necessary to implement this action. This motion came to Audit and Finance Committee on May 12th, and the committee moved this item forward to the full board for consideration.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments? I don't see any. Director Peters?
I think we should address why it was for consideration, and I'm trying to remember why that was. Jean, would you mind, do you remember, was it because just the whole, the proposal of having to reduce the number of classrooms for students was something that needed a bit of explanation or?
Jean Guzzi, Program Manager, Head Start. Are you asking the genesis of the proposal itself?
I'm trying to recall why we moved it forward for consideration. I'm trying to remember what the conversation was around that that led to that, rather than approval.
Right. I don't, I don't.
I was there, and I remember, if I remember correctly, I remember that Directors Peters and Harris wanted it moved forward for consideration and not for approval. And if I remember correctly, there wasn't a reason given. Because I wondered that same question.
Yeah.
Hi, Keshel Tonner, Director of Early Learning, Seattle Schools. Actually, I think that there was some hesitation because of the timing for when documentation was submitted, and so we had a bit of conversation about that. But beyond that, I think.
Thank you, that's what it was. Yes, there was a, the proposal wasn't provided to us in advance of the meeting, to the point where we were able to read it, and that's what it was. And so this is what we do, and we don't have enough time to process what we're being asked to do. We say, we'll move it forward for consideration, allowing us time to truly study the proposal. Thanks for jogging our memory on that.
Okay, Ms. Ritchie, the vote?
Director Gary?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
Director Peters?
Yes.
Director Blanford?
Yes.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Our next, our last, City of Seattle Project Service Contract, OSPI slash USDA Summer Food Service Program.
Okay, I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the city of Seattle in an amount not to exceed $645,041 to provide breakfast, lunch, and afternoon snacks for the city of Seattle's Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction and United States Department of Agriculture Summer Food Service Program in the form of the draft agreement attached to the board action report and presented to the school board with any minor deletions, additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
Second the motion.
Ops.
This item was heard by the Operations Committee on May the 3rd and moved forward for approval by the full board, to the full board.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on this item? Okay, I don't see none. Ms. Ritchie, the vote?
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Patu? Director Patu?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we're going into our introduction items. First one is Renew Contract BO1539 with Duck Delivery for Fresh Produce for the 2016-17 school year. What? Says none on it. No? Yes, this is, he put none on it, and I figure maybe he said, means that, see? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. 2016-2017 Families and Education Levy, FEL, contracts. Audit and Finance, recommendation?
This motion to approve the Families and Education Levy funded contracts for school year 2016-17 was presented in the Audit and Finance Committee meeting on May 12, 2016. The committee reviewed the motion, and the majority of the committee moved the item forward for consideration by the full board.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Michael Stone, Director of Grants, Fiscal Compliance. I bring forward to you the funding from the city of Seattle for the Family and Education Levy for next year, $15,469,124 that will be going out to 41 schools, 19 elementary schools, 17 middle schools, and 6/8 programs, five high schools, family support workers, nurses out of school time, and health clinics at many of our middle and high schools.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to point out that the funds for family support workers was increased, it was nearly doubled, and I know that there was a lot of interest in that throughout the city and various communities, in making sure that we do invest in our family support workers. So whoever made that happen, I think, appreciate that.
I think we need to thank Pat Sander for that, and speaking with the city and working with them to increase the funding by another $300,000.
That's great.
Thank you.
I guess no question, thank you. Our second item, Renew Contract BO1539 with Duck Delivery for Fresh Produce for the 2016-17 school year. Ops, your recommendation?
This item was heard by the Operations Committee on May the 3rd and was moved forward with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Peggy McAvoy, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. With the board's permission, we are bringing forward three annual renewals for commodities, and we'd like to bundle that together. I'd like to introduce Teresa Fields to talk about all three contracts.
Good evening, Teresa Fields, Interim Director of Nutrition Services. I have three renewals here for the 16-17 school year. The first one is B01539 Duck Delivery for Fresh Produce in the amount of $900,000. The second is B0538 with Giddy Man Distributing for our bread products with the amount of And the third is B0540 with Dairy Fresh for Fluid Milk and Dairy Products and Juice for the amount of $1,1,809.
Any, can we get a recommendation from Ops?
Well, I gave you one already, but I'll bundle the other two as well. We heard all of these on May the 3rd and moved them all forward with recommendation for approval. And I will note that we had an extensive conversation about commodities pricing, about transportation of items, about how long they keep. A number of different subjects came up in the Operations Committee consideration of these three items.
Thank you. Any more questions? Dr. Peters?
So regarding distributor of bread, I noticed it's from a company that's out of Tuolotin, Oregon, and I remember this conversation, and Director Blanford might remember it from a couple of years ago when this came up. Director Martin Morris made the point that, you know, why are we contracting with a company in a different state when we've got, you know, bread makers right here, just down the street? We have France, you know, company. So I think at the time, we were told it had to do with who was offering the best price. Is that still the case, and does it still make sense to be transporting bread all the way from Oregon rather than finding something locally?
At this time, it's still the case. So we are asking for renewal of this contract, and in the future, considering being local in Washington State.
Has the district gone to any of the local distributors and asked them to match the price of more distant distributors?
No, that's not the process that we go through, but next time we go out for our next RFP, we will be actually asking to look at local districts to give points for that, and that's something that we talked about with Ken Gott, who was our CFO previously, and he said, next time we go out for our RFP, we should think about including those factors in the process.
Okay, and so when are we scheduled to go out again?
One more year.
One more year, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Gary?
So in order to do that, to go out with the different mandates under the RFP, do you need action on behalf of the board in order to change something to make that part of the process?
He did not believe so at that time, but when we go out for an RFP, we're going to be looking very carefully at that because obviously we want to do everything correct in the procurement process.
Any more question, comment? Dr. Harris?
I'm disturbed that we're quote kicking the can for another year when we're using environmental resources to truck bread from Oregon. My recollection is that we have some policies perhaps on the book that talk about green resolutions, and I guess what I'm wondering is, how long does it take to do an RFP and would we completely kibosh your planning for next September if we ask that this be re-sent out under an RFP where those points for environmental issues and local procurement were addressed?
That's okay. So yes, it would impact the timelines and it is something that we talked about last year. We have a process that we have to go through. The contract is renewed unless we have certain issues, and right now we've been satisfied with the service that we have had. I think you're right in talking about how we want to be environmentally good stewards, and this was the first time that we ever had a non-local vendor actually bid to be the lowest provider for us. So it is a learning curve for us and we want to make sure that, that we are environmental stewards, so we'll be looking to include that in our RFPs process in the future.
Thank you. Director Blanford?
So, so that last point was an important point in the discussion of the Operations Committee, and it bears repeating, they, they did come in as the low bid. And my understanding is we have some state laws that mandate also that we accept the low bid if it meets the requirements that we've outlined.
That is correct, and that's why we go back to look at what are the requirements that we have in the RFP process.
And I'm not saying that because I'm not, I don't think environmental issues are important, but we have constraints that the state law has placed on us around accepting the low bid. I think we need to monitor very closely to ensure that the quality is high enough, and I have every faith that your department is doing that. So I'll leave it there.
Director Burke?
I want to follow up the process question a little bit, make sure that I understand this correctly. So there's an overhead cost associated with any RFP process, and so this is a renewal of, essentially a rollover, a renewal of a contract with an existing vendor, but they did rebid or they repriced? What, what is new, what is?
No, their contract stays the same as far as the amount.
So how do they deal with cost escalations for, for their products?
They had some increases in products, but they will not affect our nutrition, what we have on our bid.
So the, the dollar amount of this is the same as the dollar amount from last year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there something in our processes where above a certain dollar amount, we, we RFP annually, or is it case by case?
Actually, this is an interesting one because originally the guidance from our General Counsel's Office was, it was a three-year contract, the board approved the three-year contract, but we needed to come back annually. Our general, current General Counselor has reviewed that and said, once the board reviews that the first time, he does not necessarily believe it always needs to come back to the board, so we'll be looking at that very carefully, talking with the Ops Committee and determining if we have to come back for annual renewals on that. And here comes our General Counsel.
Noel Tree, just, just to clarify, the, the issue there with multi-year contracts is, in my view, if it comes to the board and it's clear that the district is entering and you're approving a three-year contract, then you wouldn't need to come back each year. But where we have contracts like this, which are, it's a one-year contract with options to renew, I think because those options to renew are not automatic, we need to come back to the board when the, when the cost of that renewal is over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars like is being done now.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you. Okay, our next one is Executive Five-Year Option to Extend Lease for the Center School. Ops, we get your recommendation?
This motion was heard before the Ops Committee on May the 19th and was moved forward with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bruce Scara, Director of Facilities. So we're here tonight to request board approval to renew the lease with the City of Seattle for the Center School. The current fifteen-year lease with the Center School expires on June 30th. The original lease contains an option to renew the existing lease for an additional five-year term at an estimated cost of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars per month, and the monthly cost does include all utilities, custodial, and maintenance.
Any questions, comments? Director Burke?
I'm just curious if, how this benchmarks to our other spaces in terms of cost per square foot?
It's, it's kind of a unique lease because it includes all services, maintenance, you know, as facilities, we don't even support the space. But when this came up, it's kind of a, a unique lease as well because of the term, and in discussing this with the city, they didn't allow us the opportunity to renegotiate or try to put our standard lease language in the lease. There's also no out. Any out that we would have would be negotiated out. So it's kind of a unique lease for us. That being said, it's a very good lease for us because of the, the term, and because of the amount of capital money that we put in when we first negotiated the lease fifteen years ago, the district paid, I think, eight point five million in capital to redo the space. So we got a very good lease rate, and that's continued. So it gives us an opportunity to get a very good lease, a very competitive lease for the Seattle, Seattle Center basically, but it is a very unique lease for us.
Director Blanford?
I appreciate those comments. We discussed this in the Operations Committee, that question. Another point that was made that was reinforced is the opportunity cost of potentially going somewhere else would be prohibitive for us. So the fact that, that we haven't changed the conditions of the lease, that it is favorable financially, and that the opportunity cost of going in a different direction would be prohibitive for us, I'll argue for, let's sign it as quickly as possible and move on to the next item.
But this is our, this is our opportunity to, to get out of the lease or to renew for another five-year term.
Director Burke?
One more clarifying question. So you mentioned it was a fifteen-year with a five-year renewal. After the five-year renewal, will you have to renegotiate or is there another, is there any other option?
We have the opportunity for another five-year renewal. So it was a fifteen-year with two five-year renewals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next one is Athletic Trainers Contract Renew. Ops, recommendation?
There are several items that are coming up that are all been seen by the Ops Committee. We've been busy, and they were all heard on the 19th of May. So I'll dispense with that part of it and just note that it was moved forward to the board with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
I flip her, Associate Superintendent of Facilities and Operations, and I also have with me Assistant Athletic Director Pat McCarthy. This particular item is a renewal of the contract for athletics, athletic trainers services. It's been, since 2000, we've been providing professional athletic trainer services for our secondary schools, integral part of how we help to ensure the safety of our student athletes.
Any questions, comments? Oh, can we get our recommendation from Ops for this item? Oh, you, oh yes, that's right, you did say that.
I'm happy to do it again.
Oh, no, that's okay. Director Harris?
One of my questions is, we have club sports, for instance, ultimate frisbee, where we still have some risk of traumatic brain injury. Are we looking forward to address those issues as well or to look to the pool, Mr. Stout, to be ensuring those folks since we have a, we have a relationship with those club sports?
The contract covers the high school sports, so middle school frisbee wouldn't be covered under the children's training. An athletic trainer would not be present at that event. And that includes the high school club sports as well.
I would hope we could take a look at that with respect to reducing our risk. It takes one traumatic brain injury to net a several million-dollar verdict, and because we sponsor these club sports, I think that it's well worth our while to explore expanding the contract to address club sports.
We can certainly take a look at that in the future.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Questions? Okay, move on to the next one. PTA three, thank you. Award Construction Contract K-5071, bid number 046712 for the Ingram High School Waterline Upgrades Projects. Can we get a recommendation?
The Ops Committee moved this forward for consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, my name's Richard Best, I'm Director of Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools, and I would note that we have not bid this project. This project will actually bid on June 28th of 2016. It is for replacement of domestic cold water supply piping for the main building, the gymnasium, and the auditorium at Ingram High School. At this time, bid documents have been prepared and the project is out for bid, but I cannot even tell you how many bidders we have on this project. So we will be coming back before you on July 6th seeking your approval to move forward with this project.
Betty?
Director Blanford?
And I believe there was a reason given for why it was important that we keep this in the cycle. Can you explain that?
I do know that the project manager has been coordinating with the building principal, Director Blanford, as to when this work needs to be performed. We are also looking at doing some of this work with our own in-house staff, so. So this is the, we try to avoid having our projects compete with other projects in which that way we can get the best price for the citizens of Seattle, and so this is the last project that we'll bid in this spring cycle, so.
Any more questions? Comments? Thank you. Next one is BTA three, Final Acceptance for Contract P-5041, Allied Construction Incorporated for the Green Lake Elementary Lunchroom Kitchen and Classroom slash Stage Addition Project. Ops, recommendation?
May 19th, moved forward for approval by the committee.
Thank you.
Yes, this was a project that was constructed by Allied Construction. We are recommending final acceptance. Allied Construction built at Green Lake Elementary School, a lunchroom and a stage that also houses a classroom, and then also a kitchen. The architect was Studio Ming Straza. They have confirmed that the work was complete in accordance with the contract documents, and then the change orders were reasonable for this project. They totaled approximately eight percent of the overall project budget, given that this is a addition and you have an interface that's with an existing building, that's not unreasonable. So it's one that we'd recommend that the board approve at the next school board meeting. Your acceptance is required for us to submit closeout documents to the State of Washington, three agencies, Employment Securities, Labor and Industries, and Revenue.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Next one. Resolution 2015 slash 16 dash 17, Resolution of New Limb Replacement Option for the Magnolia Elementary School Renovation, an additional project. Recommendation?
Ops Committee, May 19th, moved forward with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Yes, State of Washington requires that projects that contemplate a portion of the building being demolished have a new, in lieu of modernization, resolution passed by the Board of Directors. At this moment in time, we are in schematic design for Magnolia Elementary School, and what is being proposed is the demolition of the existing historic covered play area. In order to submit our D-5 Form to OSPI, we need your resolution acknowledging that we will not use that space for future instructional purposes. It will be demolished, and so this resolution is required, and with the space being demolished, it cannot be used for instructional purposes, so.
Director Harris?
Can you give us a sense of what the public policy reason is for this?
This, it's actually, it's a WAC, it's WAC 392, 347, 042. I do know that OSPI has had space removed for instructional use, and the school districts have gone back and utilized that space for instructional purposes, and I think that was initially what caused this to move forward. But yep, they require this resolution, so.
I think they have other things to do with their time.
Director Blanford?
Isn't the second part of that, that we receive funding based on the amount of instructional space?
Correct.
Capital funding based on the amount of instructional space that we have. So this resolution takes, takes space that we are no longer using for instructional space. It certifies that we will no longer use it for instructional space, and therefore we will receive less funding potentially.
That would be correct. Director Blanford, yep.
Director Peters?
So what will that space be used for?
We're demolishing, we're planning to demolish it, and at this moment in time, on the main floor, there are four kindergarten classrooms proposed, and then up above, a library and art classroom are proposed above that space. So we'd be creating addition in the current location of the covered play area. The first floor of that addition will be four kindergarten classrooms. Up above will be a art classroom and library. It currently is just a single-story space, Director Peters.
Okay, I, I must have missed something because I thought we just said that it was not going to be used for instructional space.
The covered play area currently is used for instructional space. We're demolishing that space, and so with the demolition of that space, in the future, we won't be able to use that demolished space for instructional, that instructional square footage will come off the books. We're proposing new, in lieu of modernizing that space. So we're proposing new space in lieu of modernizing that existing instructional space.
It's a nuanced distinction.
Yeah.
Okay, and then following up from a theme from earlier in the evening, is, this was covered play space, so in other words, So in other words, this will no longer be play space. It will be interior space. Will we have issues regarding playground space at Magnolia?
We do have a park on the east side of that school. It's topographically, it's much lower than the school, and we are creating a paved playground up above. It will be smaller than the current paved playground at Loyal Heights, but there is a park down below that has a very, has a beautiful playground.
Yeah.
So.
I'm familiar with that one. Has great views of the city, too.
Yes, it does. Has great views of the city, looks back at the city.
All right. And then do we have agreements with the city regarding our use of the playgrounds?
Uncertain at that moment, to answer that question at this time, but it would be a topic that we'd have explore with parks in our joint use agreement.
All right, that would, that would be great. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, moving right along. Bex four and PTA four, Lincoln High School, approval of GC slash CM contract P-5084 to Lydic Construction Incorporated. Ops recommendation?
May 19th, moved forward to the board for consideration.
Thank you. You're on.
So we'd like to bundle two items here, item number five and item number six. Item number five is actually the delivery that the board approved utilizing the general contractor, construction manager, delivery method. And then item number six is, oh, excuse me, yes, I'm sorry. Your 10 and 11. Yes, your 10 and 11. And then item 11 is the approval of the GC CM construction contract with Lydic Construction. OSPI does require that the board approve the general construction, the general contractor, construction manager, delivery method. There are three delivery methods that we can engage in as a school district for construction of projects. One is the traditional design bid build, which is utilized extensively. A second method is GCCM, which is general construction, construction manager. That requires approval by an organization called CPARB, Capital Projects Alternative Public Works Delivery. And then the last method is design bid build. We did go before CPARB, and they did approve Lincoln High School for utilizing, utilizing the GCCM construction methodology. The rationale is articulated as to why we want to use this project in the bar, so I'm not going to review that. You can see there are numerous points as to why we should use that delivery methodology. I will note that Seattle Public Schools has extensive use of GCCM delivery methodology and has utilized it on most, if not all, of our high schools.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Director Burke?
Thank you. I had forwarded a couple of questions in advance, and I'd like to follow up on those. The second of these, I believe number 11, is the one that refers to
Correct.
the funding approval.
Yep.
The language in this indicates that the approval also authorized the superintendent to negotiate and sign a contract agreement for the guaranteed maximum price. So I'm trying to understand, are we approving a bar for $300,000 or $56,749,750? Or something in between?
You're approving both. You're approving a bar for $300,000 for negotiated support services. That is the work that the general contractor will do prior to beginning construction during the design phase. He will provide design input. He will provide cost estimating services. They will be attending the weekly design meetings to help guide the process such that we can deliver a project in the amount of $56,749,750. That is a guaranteed maximum price. That's articulated in the contract documents that they are to work to. State of Washington does not allow us to enter into that formal agreement and have that contractor guarantee that price until we have completed 90% of the design documents. We are at the very beginning of the design process, Director Burke, and so we can't, if costs exceed that, we would have to come back before the board. If costs exceed the $56,749,750,000, if costs are below that, we would make the board aware that we are moving forward with the project either through some type of informal board report or a Friday memo to the board. So. So you're really approving both actions, and the $300,000 is not included in that guaranteed maximum construction price of the $56,749,750.
Thank you. And is this kind of the sequence of the, the initial phase along with the total project approval? Is that typical for all large capital projects? Or is that typical with the GCCM model?
Typical with the GCCM model, yes. The GCCM model, we establish the fixed price. The architect works in his design to that fixed price. The general contractor makes recommendations as to how he can, the different types of materials to utilize, the construction methodology, maybe how to simplify the design to remain within that fixed price. But we have really established a fixed price for delivery. Things that are beyond both of their control are construction escalation. And so that's where the State of Washington stepped in almost a decade ago and said, you school districts and you public agencies cannot enter into that guaranteed maximum price until your design documents are 90% complete. Because what was happening previously is you would go in, you'd sign these contracts, and then escalation, 2006, 2007 timeframe was five, six, seven percent annually, it was anticipated to be three, and you could see two or three years of escalation, you had a huge financial problem.
Director Harris?
Were you done?
I'll come back to it if you want to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not quite, not quite. Okay. This, this one wasn't in the list, but I know that you'll be able to do a great job on this one, because this is, this is intrinsic for you. The, can you, can you help us better understand what it is about the GCCM model that incentivizes our contractors essentially as partners to save us money? Help our projects come in under budget?
Well, what helps in this process is you actually submit a request for qualifications. The contractor then is able to articulate, and I'm going to give you as relates to Lincoln High School, he's able to articulate his high school experience. He's able to articulate his historic experience. He's able to identify all the team members so that we have the opportunity to do a background check on these and see what their professional experience is and to how it relates to our project. And two of the three, well, there were five firms that submitted, and two of those five firms really stood out above the other three firms that, that submitted on this. But you, you're able to bring in qualifications as a consideration. It's not just all price.
Thank you. And then the last question is that the, in the bar, there's a, it indicates the Bex four and BTA four, or Bex, yeah, Bex and BTA funding totals about $93 million, but the project budget is this $56,749. And the question is around the difference there. And what, are those things that are authorized under separate board action reports? Or are they, how, where, where does that money go?
Yes, there will be, some of that money goes to design fees. We'll have, for design fees and professional services, that will, those costs will probably near $11 million. Furniture, curriculum, and technology for a new high school is approximately $3 million for each of those, so there's another $9 million. We have a owner's construction contingency of approximately 10%, so 5, 5.5 million in construction contingency. Then we have Washington state sales tax that we'll have to pay on construction. That's going to, doing some quick math, will be $6 million. So you can see that quickly adds up to the $93 million, but those items that are above $250,000 will be coming before you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Director Harris?
Real quickly, you were using the male pronoun he as the contractor. Could it as easily be a she?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Second, do we ever get treated like the big corporations do in Olympia, where we get to waive the sales tax?
No, we never get to waive sales tax.
Okay. Last question. Could you put up to $56 million on the agenda, and this might be better focused to our board's staff, so that those really big numbers jump out the page at folks? On the agenda, we don't see under 11, up to $56 million. Those commas and zeros, I think, need to be enhanced in terms of giving folks an upfront look, because I don't think anybody here wants to wake up 10 years from now and, and have a Garfield redo.
I can work with Teresa on that. I know what you're asking, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, moving right along. Bex four, final acceptance of work performed under public works contract P-5048, Arbor Heights School Phase One Project, Commercial Structures Incorporated. Ops?
Ops committee heard this on May the 19th and moved it forward for approval.
Thank you.
Yes, and this is for Phase One for Arbor Heights Elementary School, which was primarily the demolition of the existing building, the removal of hazardous materials, and then the site work to do the rough grading for this building project. Arbor Heights is divided into two, two phases. One was site preparation, and the second phase is actual construction of the building and final delivery, which is occurring at this moment in time. This work occurred in the summer of 2014. They completed roughly January, February of 2015. Architect has confirmed that their work is complete, and so we are recommending final acceptance.
Director Harris?
Quick question. Have we ever put a dollar figure on what the delay at Arbor Heights because of various appeals cost us?
The delay on the steel has not cost us anything. That, that was a contractor problem and a supplier problem. There is a premium that we've paid for weather on Arbor Heights Elementary School, and I can give you that dollar amount, Director Harris. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can put that in a Friday memo to the board.
I guess my point was, my recollection is there were some citizen or community appeals that delayed the project. Is, is my recollection incorrect?
There were some citizen appeals. I don't think they delayed the project. That would not be true of Genesee Hill. The citizen appeals did delay the project at Genesee Hill Elementary School, but not at Arbor Heights.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Thank you, moving right along. Bex, final acceptance of contract P-5036, Lincoln Construction Incorporated, for the Jane Adams Middle School Repurposing and Seismic Improvements Project, Phase One. Ops?
May 19th, Ops committee moved forward for approval.
Thank you.
So again, this was work performed in the summer of 2014, prior to opening Jane Adams Middle School, again, as a middle school. The work was performed by Lincoln Construction. The architect has confirmed that the work is completed in accordance with the contract documents. We've received all of the proper closeout documents, and so we are recommending that the board accept this project as final and complete. I will highlight to the board's attention that the one-year warranty period for this work ended on September 8th, 2015, so.
What does that mean?
Just that there's no longer a warranty for the work, and it's taken this contractor an exceptionally long time to get this project complete. I have discussed with the operations committee members that one of the changes that we're making in the construction contract is tying the warranty period to final acceptance, to board final acceptance, to give contractors an incentive to get their projects done, and the closeout documents to Seattle Public Schools in a more timely manner.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, moving to our last one. PTA three, final acceptance of contract K-5025, Western Ventures Construction Incorporated for the Plain, Exdein, and Ingram DDC upgrades, 2013.
Ops committee heard this on May the 19th and moved it forward for approval.
Thank you.
So again, this is a project that was completed in the summer of 2013. We have finally got all of the closeout documents for this project. I will note that the change orders are very large on this project, but one of the reasons that the change orders are large is change order one was in the amount of $157,679, and that was actually a bid alternate that we accepted after the contract had been awarded. We came back and accepted a bid alternate that had been contemplated in the bidding documents, but wasn't awarded at the time the construction contractor was awarded. So it skews the change order percentage. That's noted in the board documents that you have.
Why is it so high?
I do know it was for the replacement of condensing receivers, tanks, and pumps for eight different locations, but I don't know, Director Petu, why it was so high. What I can tell you is that that amount was in the bid document, wasn't accepted at the time the board at that moment in time approved the project, and then was accepted after the fact. And I don't know the history. I wasn't here when that occurred back in 2013, so.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? I move the meeting as adjourned. Thank you very much, Richard.
Thank you.
And Flip?